November twenty-fourth meeting of the Bruce Township zoning boards of appeals. To order, please. Roll call Dana.
Mas.
Here.
Keller.
Here.
Vincent.
Here.
Barrett.
Here.
O'Koffen.
Here. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
No move.
Second.
Moved and supported, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Is approved. Item five is approval of the minutes. August twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-five. Motion to approve.
Motion to approve the minutes as submitted.
I'll second.
Do you have any comments, adjustments, or corrections to the minutes? Jenny, did you have anything?
No, I'm gonna, I think.
You're good with it?
Yeah, it'll be, it'll be fine.
At a cop, just. Anybody else have any? Real, two real, small ones. Uh, and under most, uh, the. Page three, the tree item was covered during the same public hearing, that paragraph. Two and a half inch caliper rather than two and a half foot.
Thank you.
Let's say, yeah.
What are you saying there, Tom?
It says with five foot tall, two and a half foot caliper nursery trees, two and a half, yeah. And.
And they're aware of what the requirement is, which is larger than that, we just mentioned that?
Well, this is just in the minutes, so we're just correcting the minutes at this point.
Okay.
Yeah, that would be something to discuss when we get to that item. The only other thing, Dana, and I'm not sure, and I mean, it's under, on page two. A letter against the development was received, I think it should be from the layer family.
Yes.
Other than that, I have.
I'm moving the motion to include the corrections stated.
Support.
Second.
Okay. All in favor of approving the minutes as amended?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? To approve. Item six, unfinished business. A is the lot depth requirement. The two-hundred-and-foot requirement on a private road. The. I have to clarify that this, we are not having a public hearing regarding this item. One of the reasons that we can't reopen the public hearing, and I want to clarify, is because the timeframe of when we last met and tabled the item. Is too long to reopen that public hearing. Because we aren't acting on the actual variance, we don't need to have a public hearing. In effect, we're going to take another action. But prior. Prior to discussing the issue, I've asked Jared to go over what took place at the planning commission meeting and then at the full board meeting, so that you have some insight as to where we are right now.
Sure, thanks, Tom. Uh, so as we talked about last meeting in August, the outcome of the discussion on lot depth was to send it back to the planning commission to review potential ordinance changes to this requirement. Uh, so when the planning commission met in September, uh, we discussed it along with Joe's, uh, input, um, we were never able to uncover why or for what purpose that, um, specific call out for two-hundred-foot that lot depth was in there for private, um, for, for lots on private roads. Uh, so as a result of that, uh, we did ultimately, uh, have a motion at the October meeting, um, that was put forth by, um, Commissioner Boyce, uh, to recommend to the board that that two-hundred-foot lot depth on private roads would be, uh, removed. So there was two different places, uh, where this change was, uh, was called out in one-sixty-one dash five dot seventeen dot C dot five. And then in, uh, one-sixty-one dash four dot forty-seven dot D dot two. Uh, so in both of those, um, the ordinance was recommended to be amended, um, to remove those specific callouts, that was the only change. There was no, um, there was, there was a public hearing on this, there was no negative or pushback on any, any changes. So. It passed unanimously.
And then it went on to the, to the full board where it was, they approved the recommendation. The reason that we are discussing it now is because. The ordinance amendment takes effect nine days after the board meeting, so we are not beyond that nine days. If it was beyond the nine days, we wouldn't even address this on the, on our agenda. But since it is not in effect at this point. What we need, what I need right now is a motion to bring the item off the table for discussion.
I'll make a motion to remove, uh, the lot depth issue off the table for discussion.
Or.
Jared's support. Okay, at this time. I don't think there really is a whole lot of fusion or lack of clarity on what, what is being requested here, so, uh, I think at this point I would accept the motion to accept the eleven, ten, twenty-five correspondence from Lombardo Homes to withdraw the variance requests. From this body.
Do that because. We're not going to talk about it in the meeting, it's being withdrawn because it's going into effect in the next few days.
Yes.
I just want to make sure.
Yes, if, if it was beyond the nine days, it wouldn't even be on our agenda. We could just take it off the table and eliminate it.
Okay.
We're kind of caught in that in-between area.
Right, I'll make a motion to remove the two-hundred-foot depth item off of the request from Lombardo.
Okay, and.
Also.
And can we indicate the eleven, ten, twenty-five correspondence just for the record?
Yes.
Okay.
Need to include the eleven, ten, twenty-five, uh, correspondent. Support.
Moved and supported, are there any other comments or discussion? Questions or concerns? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Next item is the. Variance request. For the number of trees, and again, because of the length of time, since we met last, when the item was tabled, we now have to hold another separate public hearing. And I'm not going to. Talk about people coming, speaking for or against it, because I don't think we have to worry about that tonight, so. So at this time, would entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
I'll make that motion to open the public hearing.
I'll second.
Moved and supported. All in favor of opening the meeting?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, all right, at this time, I think the first order of business in order to discuss this is again, a motion to remove the item from the table and open it for discussion.
I'll make a motion to remove the item from table and open for discussion for three variants.
Okay. Worded by Barrett?
I'll second.
Okay, get some action done this.
No, I'm just trying to stand to remove it from the table part.
Once we table it.
Okay, I get, now I understand what you're saying.
Yeah.
Yes, because we tabled it, we have to take it off.
We have to have to take it off the table in order, in order to.
Okay.
So. Roberts wrote the rule, I did.
No, I, I just needed to follow.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, so.
We need to vote on that?
Yeah, oh, I'm sorry, yes, we do, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so the item is open for discussion at this point, so the floor is yours.
I want to start by calling crowds.
Alrighty. Hello, my name is, uh, Joe Lombardo, I'm with Lombardo Homes, one-three-zero-zero-one, twenty-three mile road, Shelby Township. Uh, so today I'm going to go over the background of the site and how we got here, um, the ordinance that we are seeking the variance for in our request. So you guys already touched upon this, I don't think I need to go through all this, but like, uh, like Jared said, the lot depth ordinance, um, is being amended, therefore we are only requesting a variance to the tree preservation ordinance. So compliance with this ordinance would require five-hundred-and-eighty-eight trees, but we are proposing four-hundred-and-fifteen, therefore we're seeking a variance for a hundred and seventy-three trees. However, we really have made, you know, every reasonable effort to comply with this ordinance, um, including meeting with planning commission members, uh, the township planner and our landscape architect, to try and add as many trees as possible in order to comply. Um, that included, you know, expanding the open space areas and planting trees around the, uh, entire perimeter of the site. Um, that resulted in additional hundred-and-eighty-nine trees from our original plan. Um, as you can see here, in June of twenty-five, that was our initial plan, and then after those discussions with the planning commission members, um, we came up with this plan for July twenty-five, where we vet all the streets of the perimeter and the open spaces, and, um, just resulted in a significant number of additional plantings. But even with that, you know, we were only able to get up to that four-hundred-and-fifteen. So I'd like to note a couple additional hardships, um, with complying with the ordinance. Uh, so a significant number of the trees on site that we're proposing to remove are actually dead or dying or species that are not prohibited by the township. And the way that the ordinance calculates the required number of replacements, um, is a one-to-one ratio and does not provide any, uh, provisions or exemptions for dead trees or trees that are of undesirable species. So as a result, you know, the applicant is, uh, effectively penalized for removing trees that are already dead or that wouldn't be allowed to be used as replacements in the first place. Also, the, uh, ordinance does not offer any alternative compliance options when, you know, the site constraints prevent compliance. Uh, there's no mechanism in the ordinance that, uh, allows for planting trees elsewhere in the township or paying into a tree preservation fund like done in, uh, similar ordinances from different municipalities. Um, so there's really no means for the, other means for the applicant to go when, you know, the physical site conditions limit planting opportunities. So, uh, therefore we respectfully request a variance to ordinance one-sixty-one, five-point-two-oh B three, to allow four-hundred-and-fifteen replacement trees in lieu of the five-hundred-and-eighty-eight replacement trees.
Okay, you have any questions? Clarification? One?
So the only, only follow-up that I have from our last meeting was the size of some of the trees you were planning to put in, right? I believe it was two or two and a half inch that you brought up? And, uh, I think the. Ordinance calls for three-inch.
Yeah, as far as I know, of all the trees that we're proposing are in compliance with the replacement standards of the ordinance, um, that was not brought up by any of the reviews.
Great.
But I could, if there is.
So anything I got?
Okay. Any other questions? The only common areas are the roads and the storm, storm drains and that?
Yeah, so we have, the common areas are, we have an easement around the perimeter of the site where you see all those plantings. And then also the open space near the, the entrance of the site, and also the trees around the, uh, perimeter of the road.
And the road.
Yep. And the ponds, pond as well.
Yeah, right. How high is the berm, is it five feet?
Uh, yes, five feet.
Okay. I think at the last meeting, there was some discussion about larger trees or evergreens. I think it was Jenny's question.
Of the evergreen.
Oh, the evergreen part, yeah.
Yeah. Particularly. Uh, it would be the west side of the Timber Sub, the gentleman was in here.
Mm-hmm.
You're, and I think there was at least, I think it was agreement to try to obscure the view of Van Dyke, uh, with the trees.
Yeah, it was Tony Caruso from Timberport, who backs up there. So you can pass that on as far as, um, being to your landscaper.
Yep.
When you get ready to do that, who knows when? But, um, those are the people that'll be most affected, you know, by the change of the trees coming out and, and whatever's going to be developed in there. So those people I think would need to be considered the most with additional trees or a little closer together or whatever, so just be aware of that.
Yep, yeah, well.
Appreciate it.
I'll consult our, uh, landscape architect to add additional evergreens along that property line and potentially increase the caliber if possible. Um, I'm not a landscape architect, so I don't know everything that goes into that, but if it's possible, we will do it.
Right. And in our, our, our motion that carried, it says here that the five-foot berm height with five-foot-tall, two-and-a-half-inch caliper nursery trees are what are planned to be planted, so, um, that. That should be three-inch caliper minimum, correct?
Okay.
From what our, our ordinance states.
That's what it looks like to me in the. Unless there was a change that, that I don't have, but I think probably, um, we can cover that by saying that it has to meet the landscape requirements of Bruce Township ordinance and then, yeah.
For sure. Just that I didn't think about that. When we were amending the minutes, that we should have put that there rather than the two-and-a-half-inch caliper.
Yep.
What's that?
I think we should, uh.
Two and a half.
You're sticking with it, huh? That'd be a rough transition.
Yeah.
So those are the only things that I, I saw. I'm so glad you're doing something along tating there, too.
Yeah. Yeah.
Keep kids from seeing that too easily.
Yeah.
That could turn into the neighborhood fishing pond.
Yeah.
At certain times of the year.
Yeah, well, I, I don't think we'll, we're gonna be putting any fish in there, but you never know all the time.
Amazing how birds just.
Yeah, that's true.
Yeah, fish eggs on their, their, their legs and all of a sudden.
One-two-oh, aggressive, all of it, right? Any other questions or comments at this point before we discuss the request? Okay. All right, at this time, entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
All moved.
Second.
Moved and supported. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the public meeting is closed. You're, you're still free to make comments if. You feel the need. Okay, so at this point. We can discuss the request. And I think. I would ask. I would ask Jared again, I think there was quite a bit of discussion and negotiation on this as I understand at the Planning Commission.
Uh, that's correct. Uh, this was, um, part of the discussion. This particular project had come through the Planning Commission numerous times, I was looking at my notes here. Near the end, it became apparent that the, um, replacement trees was gonna be, uh, a problem. There was an inventory of all the trees on-site. Uh, and as Joe mentioned, uh, quite a bit of back and forth discussion just on some of the condition of the trees, those that are dead or near dead. And those that were of a type of tree that we wouldn't permit to be replanted if they were, uh, going to replant that particular tree. Uh, so as a result of that, the, um, ultimately the Planning Commission did approve this project to move forward, um, subject to a variance on the tree request. So, uh, I would say the Planning Commission was at a, a level of comfort with what was being proposed. But deferring that ultimate decision to the ZBA. I think, I, I would say we recognize, um, that there was a substantial effort made to get as many trees on the property as reasonably possible. Oh, the tree ordinance does cover a lot of cases. This is a particular unique, um, project where it just created hardships that were beyond what we, you know, would have foreseen when writing it or updating it. So. I think in light of that, it was, um, the Planning Commission's, um, feeling that this project should move forward in light of that.
So can we go ahead and make that stated to accept the variance then at this point?
Yes, unless there are any conditions talked about that you want to make us in addition to approving or denying the request. If, if, if there's an approval, I think we did, uh, talk about what I have is additional evergreens along that western side by or, I guess we can be a little bit more generic rather than say evergreens uh, along that western side of the timber subdivision. And that they comply with the requirements of the zoning ordinance, that section. So those would be two, two requirements I think that should go along with the, with the discussion. So and any others that come to mind at this
that know that you're gonna get additional and larger trees both there. I would think we go just for the larger start and not try to, because if you condense too many trees in there, someone will die anyway. So, I don't think we want to force that.
Yeah, I think the, the purpose is to try to provide screening. And if you have a whoever your landscape engineer is, meeting with the township planner, I think would be sufficient for our purposes here.
Yeah.
Any, uh, any other comments?
I have nothing else. Waiting.
I was. So the following requirements are to provide additional screening at the west end of the timber sub. And there should be a meeting between the developer and the township to discuss how that's accomplished. And, uh, comply with the landscape requirement. Is there anything else that if the motion moves forward, rule?
Uh, you said the western side of the timbers. That western portion along the commercial parcel is right now, it's almost all evergreen species. Were you referring to the southern end of the timbers regarding that?
Yeah, I guess I was referring to the western end, the western side of the landscaped area which would be the southern part of the timber next to it. Is that, and that's where you said?
Yeah, okay, that makes more sense. Yeah. No, okay, so, can I clarify then? Because I'm confused. I thought it was the west edge, the block, potential due to Van Dyke. Are we saying that's something different?
No, that's.
So all these trees right here?
Yes.
These are already evergreens, brood trees? Um, but we can't increase the ratios, are you?
Yeah, I think the request is just to start with larger trees in that area. Just to
Okay.
get the screening sooner than later, right? Just in that
Okay, I mean, misunderstood, I thought it was for a species. Well, I think it was, that's why I'm asking. I think, uh, do we not, do we need that first condition? I think if the plan is showing those are largely evergreen style trees. Does that satisfy the condition and we just have to put the second one in there, which is just ensure compliance with the, the tree ordinance? Because that will dictate the caliber size.
All right.
So basically, the July plan uh, that we have in front of us is really what we're
Yes.
Proving it.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, we can strike that. Thanks for clarifying that. All that writing. Anything else?
Nothing really.
Okay. Do we have anyone that would like to make a motion? Right? I, well, I have some of it, but, uh,
Um.
I can fill in the blanks.
Well, it says in the red, inside the red box there, the revised, we revised the site plan to accommodate an additional 189 trees in these areas. 189. And on a request, it's for 173.
Yeah, so as Joe was explaining, they started out much lower than the 415?
Right.
Originally, they added 189 to get the 415. They're still 170 short.
Oh, okay.
Any other questions? All right. Well, I would make a motion to approve the request for a variance on For the reduction of 174.
173.
Of 173 trees on the parcel. Would be conditioned upon compliance with, uh, the landscape requirements of ordinance 161, Section 5.20. The reasons for approval, number one, strict enforcement of the ordinance would create a practical difficulty by limiting the number of building sites in the zoning district and agreed to in the conditional zoning agreement, simply to meet that number. The Planning Commission spent a great deal of time reviewing the plan and agreed to the reduction of 174 trees was a reasonable request. Number two, the requirement for the number of trees on the property is not consistent with the similar development adjoining the property, the timber. Number three, the conditions and circumstances were not created by the developer. The calculation of the number of trees required in this case produced a number that cannot reasonably be planted and expected to survive, to survive, nor would it add to the preservation of the existing trees. Number four, the required variance will not confer special privilege, uh, to the developer. Similar properties with the same or similar size and configuration would be given, uh, equal, uh, consideration. And number five, the approval of the requested variance is consistent with the Bruce Township zoning ordinance purpose and intent to provide broad range of development opportunities in the community.
I will support the motion.
I second.
Okay. Can we have a roll call, Dana?
Barrett?
Yes.
Keller?
Yes.
Vincent?
Yes.
Maas?
Yes.
Okav.
Yes. The request for the variance is approved.
Yay.
It's like you're building this up.
Go build it up.
That was a long, a long road.
Right? Now it begins, though. Yeah, I think that was. Continue on that.
Okay. Back to this here. Okay. Thank you.
Very well presented.
That brought up an interesting question.
Brought up questions in my head.
Uh, something that we don't have that we might want to consider having, and that is, uh, a tree preservation fund in case we run into
Absolutely.
Like this.
I have it underlined because we do with the sidewalks.
And when he had, you know, read this in here, um, I thought the same thing.
Yeah, I took two notes in here, uh, in this presentation. One was that, is, um, potential change the ordinance to create that. And then the other was looking, do we need to account for, uh, prohibited species or dead trees? I think I'll take those back to the Planning Commission for a future conversation to see if there's additional changes that are warranted.
And you said that other, other municipalities have such a thing, so.
Yeah, so like, majority of the other tree preservation ordinances at other municipalities around the area, um, they have provision, provisions in place for, uh, based by the DBH of tree removal. So it's being just a direct relationship based on the species, X amount of dollars per inch. So if you cut down a giant 30-inch tree, um, it's times whatever rate they set, it can not provide replacement. So, there's either that or I think other ones also allow you to plant replacement trees elsewhere, um, if you have another property or something like that. Personally, that, that would be preferred for someone like a developer like us because, uh, we have other properties within the township that's accomplishing the same thing and we're not cost of those replacements gets pretty base on field.
Gotcha.
It costs a lot more to pay into the fund than it would be to fund the tree.
Yeah.
Joe, do they still like to do that with wetlands, create them on other properties?
Yeah, I guess similar to that, yeah. What plans have been.
So, like Shelby Township, is that one that has such a thing or?
Shelby Township.
Before we, it'd be nice to know, be, be, go right to them and see what they're saying.
Just off the top of my head, I'm thinking like
Yeah, you take the old.
Oakland Township, I believe, I know like Northville, a lot of those surrounding Ann Arbor communities, they all have tree preservation ordinances that have provisions like that. So, I think Washington Township has, uh, preservation ordinance, but very similar to you guys, so.
It's all online, I think. There's our all online.
Yeah, I think probably, and I won't speak for Jared, but I'll ask him the question. It would be something you might refer to Joe and ask to provide you with some.
Yep, and, and that's not uncommon. We, uh, we're doing some things with the lighting ordinance right now, and that's typically where a lot of those things start, is Joe will pull examples from other communities that might be trying, have accomplished something that we're trying to accomplish, uh, now. So he typically will bring examples from other to help craft ours.
Gentlemen and ladies.
We're not.
Are we done?
No way.
We haven't closed yet.
No.
We haven't taken comments from the floor, we haven't done business?
Yes. Item seven, new business. Do we have any new business? Hearing none. Item eight, comments from the floor? Hearing none. Communications?
New.
New. Item 10, motion to adjourn.
Second.
So will.
Was that a motion?
That was a motion.
Approved.
None available anyways.
Jumped right in.
Thank you. Thank you.
Happy Thanksgiving to everyone.
Thank you too.
Don't talk, guys, move your.